I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fitting at this election time, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So thank you, exciting start to tonight's meeting with a little celebration. And let's turn the time over to... Okay, let's have here Peter.
All right, this is an exciting celebration that I get to kind of lead a conversation on. So one of the things that we love about this school board is we have had, this was, these, this mission, vision, commitments and goals was adopted about four years ago and it's never changed. So we get to keep going after the very same thing year in and year out, which makes, makes it very doable for us. So we appreciate that consistency from our board on that. If you look at this, one of the things I kind of want to point out that I'm going to talk to, to is, is our district-wide goals. You can see one of those goals is to learn from the best schools and districts in the state until we become the highest achievement district in the state as measured by annual state assessments. And we've kept you up to date on that. We've made great progress on that goal. We keep pursuing that constantly. But we've had great luck there. The third goal is to have each student connected to their school. I loved our conversation in study sessions tonight and how we've made some courageous decisions as a board to try to achieve that goal of helping more kids get connected and feel a part of their school and their school community. And that's a big deal. And then the third one is be recognized as a model PLC district and have each school recognized as a model PLC school. So tonight we are here to, I'm going to tell you a little bit about what that means to be a model PLC district and what we have been able to accomplish there and, and be able to celebrate with you guys tonight. So in order to be a model PLC district, number one is a really, really rare thing. There are only thirty-one districts nationwide that have been recognized as a model PLC district. So it's a rare thing that are running in the state of Utah. This is our system for trying to improve the capacity of our educators to get more students to learn and to get more students to learn. It's, it's our plan. It's our, you were using sports analogy, it's our offense. That's what we run and we run it over and over and over again to just try to get really good at it. It's built off of two main things. Number one, that every team of teachers or every team we have in our district, not just teachers, but schools, leadership teams, we have district teams, we're all trying to do the best we possibly can. And especially when it comes to the teacher team, all, everyone else exists to try to help those teams achieve their goals. And we're very goal-driven. We set goals, we try to achieve those goals, and we make our changes to our system based around the pursuit of those goals. That's the PLC process. We have different things that we try to measure that on, but to be a model PLC school, you got to get really good at setting and not just setting goals, but chasing them and willing to make the changes you need to, to achieve those goals. And then the second part of the PLC process that we work on is, once you have become great or once you've learned something, it's your obligation to share with others. That's our improvement model. Everyone's trying to become great and once you learn something and get more students to learn, you have an obligation to share with everyone how you did that, down to the details. It's kind of that idea of, that works for us well too, because once you've learned something, the way you get better at that thing is to share it with others. Otherwise, you start to die within the thing that you learned. And so we really, we push that. It's a kind of a human growth model and we know that the only way that you get more students to learn, the only way you get more students to learn is if the adults with them, that are working with them, get better at what they do. And so we just hinge off that. So that's the PLC process. That's what we've, we're getting better and better and better at. It's amazing to watch our teachers work. It's amazing to watch our, our school leadership team, teams and our district teams talk about how to support those teachers in achieving their goals. One of the things I wanted to highlight though with you guys is there's another team that we rely on and that's you guys. If a school board doesn't come in and recognize that to, in order for this to work, teachers need time to collaborate, this doesn't work. They can't pursue goals together. So decisions to have collaboration time on Monday, decisions that you guys have made to give us that extra day at each quarter for schools to learn from other schools and teachers to learn from other schools, once they've learned something. Without those spaces, that knowledge just stays within the existing team that it, that, that it sits in. That's critical to our model and you've made some great decisions there to support these teams in achieving their goals. Without great pay to make the teachers feel valued in our community, this type of stuff doesn't happen. Without divvying out resources to, to let us kick off the first of every year with a conference that helps us solidify and get grounded again in what PLC work is and how we go about it better. All of those things are resources that you guys have stewardship over that has allowed us to pursue that, that goal of becoming a model PLC district. Okay? And so with that, there's a, there's a guy that Steph's going to pull up here in just a second. When, when you go to apply to become a model PLC district, there's certain criteria you've got to hit. And it's, they're, it's, it's hard to hit it. You got to have three years of consistent growth on student achievement data and you have to do it throughout different demographics across all subject areas. You've, you've got to show artifacts that show that you're using that process to improve the, the capacity of adults. You've got to show it across all schools. There's all these criteria that you have to hit and that's why there's so few schools that have actually hit this designation. You got to have a board that supports the changes that allow the teachers to grow. So with that, this guy that Steph's going to show, his name's Mike Maddos, he's kind of the leader of, of a, one of the, he's not the owner, but he's a leader in an organization called Solution Tree that, that marks this designation. This is who we applied to be a model s- school through. So he's going to kind of do a quick thing. He, he recorded this for us. So I'm going to let Steph play this for us.
Personal message to the Wasatch County School District. Heard that you were recently named a model professional learning committee for the entire district. Having been an educator who served at a school that was named a model PLC, I know how hard it is. The practices you've committed to have proven to work, but they're the opposite of how schools have run for well over a hundred years. And so what it takes is a lot of dedication, a lot of courage, a lot of willingness to change what you're doing on behalf of your students and perseverance. Kids, you won't be perfect at this at first. The other thing I know that it takes is, what you've done is you can promise these great practices to every student in every school, every class, every grade, regardless of what school they attend in your district. Phenomenal. As someone who has a child of my own, that's what you wish, that their education is not happening by luck, it's happening by design. So to the school board, to district and site leadership, to teachers, to parents and students, it took all of you working hand in hand to pull this off, especially the teachers. Cause where the rubber hits the road in this process is that weekly collaboration teacher teams are doing every single week to get better at what they do to help kids, that support staff, admin working hand in hand with them. So again, just congratulations. Super proud of you. Looking forward to seeing you continue to improve for years to come.
All right. So on behalf of, yeah. On behalf of all of the school administrators, teachers, we want to thank the school board for supporting this entire process, everything that's gone into it and becoming the thirty-second model school district in the United States. So. So what, so once you get that designation, it does become your obligation to share with others. We're on a website now. People, oh, they can look at us from around the country. They can, we wrote up an application of the things and the way we do things and they can check us out. We also commit that if anybody wants to come and visit us and learn how we do what we do, that they get to come and visit us. We open our doors to them. And so that's a, a big thing as well. So one of the things we did this morning in admin meeting is we asked our principals, so if people were going to visit us, what's one thing that before they left here, based off of what you know what we're doing, that's making such a difference in student learning? What's one thing that you would want them to get before they left from the district standpoint? And what's one thing that you want, you would want them to see in your school? Cause when they come in, they usually want to see both. Cause they know if you're a model PLC district, you've got a lot going on in your schools and they also know you do some unique things as a district as well. So I'm, some of the administrators are going to come up and they're kind of, kind of report to you what they think they're one thing that, that we would highlight, what's made such a difference for them as far as a district approach to this, and also one thing that they would highlight in their school. So I'm going to turn some time over to them.
I know we're, we're excited at the high school to be a part of a district that's willing to go out and do things, maybe not conventional, but we're able to make sure that students are learning. And so we kind of talked a little bit this morning about how does this feel? I've been a building administrator, I think this is my nineteenth year in the building. And so this is kind of a surreal moment. Takes eighteen years to raise a child. It's been eighteen years since we kind of started this process as a district. And it's really cool to see a district, a board that's willing to kind of stick their neck out and do things to allow us to do what is best for kids. So on behalf of the high school, I just want to say thanks for all you do. But one of the things we talked about in our PLC this morning in the group I was in is we talked about some vertical alignment teams, that would be a district recognition that we'd like to do. We have some high school teachers leading those vertical alignment teams. And not only are they vertically aligned with the history, the English, the math and the science, but now they're starting to cross-curricular, which they're starting to go back and forth of, hey, I see that you're doing this, so let's add this to the, to the math department. And then one of the things we talked about that we, we would highlight in our building, it's hard to choose just one thing. We would, we'd want to show them what a daily routine is, but we would want to show them getting into the classroom. Because you can go to, to our history departments, a, a model PLC, our, our science and math and English. But the other day I was on visits with our coaches and I went and wa- watched the English team and they were all, the English nine team, they were teaching the same lesson. So I got to visit four different teachers and as I started, I start, I got to see the beginning, kind of the, the beginning, middle and the middle end and then the end, and it was all the same lesson. So going back to what Mr. Maddow said, it didn't matter which class my child had, they were getting the same lesson curriculum. Presented a little differently because we don't want to take the art away from a teacher, but the standards were there. And to me, that's what I would highlight at the, at the high school is going in and visiting our history teams and our English teams and our science and math teams. So again, thank you.
And that was after Jimmy lost all the weight and he's a lot quicker too. Is that sexy, it sounds, I'm going to, I would love to have someone be able to see what our master schedule looks like. And that was done, that started with Stephanie Dishar who preceded me at Old Mill, where she cut her teeth on that practice. But now as an executive director is working with the other elementary schools to do the same thing. And this highlights not only the district involvement, but also what the board has done in making sure that within a master schedule, we have time for collaborative teams to do their work on a Monday. But I also would love other schools to be able to see that there are times for what we call protected time or tier one, tiers two, three and four. I would like them to see that it's possible for all those things to take place on a regular basis so that teachers then can start to trust that, that process. On a school level, I would love them to come see our Monday team meetings. Sometimes I think the national narrative tends to make cynics of people that think that all we care about are numbers, percentages, rankings, et cetera. And while those things are wonderful, uh, uh, things we accomplish as a result of our work, they're the end point. But if they were to come to a Monday meeting, they would see that those protocols that we use in a Monday team meeting ensure that individual students' names aren't talked about on a regular basis, standard by standard. They are entered into tier one, tier two and tier three data sheets. Weekly plans are discussed student by student. I think it would make, or at least help everyone to understand that numbers are the result, not the goal. The student learning is definitely where our focus is and you don't have to sacrifice one for the other. Once again, on behalf of Old Mill, thank you for your support, school board.
I believe it was in two thousand and seven when I know Sean, Paul, me and other principals who have gone to the sunny slopes of retirement who aren't here, sat in this boardroom and I, if I remember right, superintendent, they came, the board came down here and we went up in those chairs and we made a plea to them to let the whole district have one hour of early out so we could give embedded time for collaboration with teachers. And that was kind of, to my knowledge, the first big ask we asked of a board of this journey and that was in two thousand and seven, I believe. And just all along the way, as we've come to the board saying, we need this to go one step deeper into our journey of becoming a high achieving district and the board has been willing to say, we trust you. And if there was one thing I would say to someone who has come here that has probably been a game changer among many things, it's the board's willingness to put in a, a specific director of academics who can lead us K-12 through this whole journey. And so opening up a position that Dr. Peterson came in and filled has also been a huge game changer and necessary for this whole thing. And then if anyone came to my school to see, I, I was going to say like, come just see one of our teacher teams working, but that's been kind of said. I think I, I would show them our system of interventions, of our embedded stretch time that's embedded into every single day and the miracle of getting a thousand plus kids, extra time and support through just all hands on deck kind of mentality. So thank you board for always being willing to trust us and give us the resources we need. And I think the fruit of this is because of those things. Thanks.
Felt like the, all the old wise ones shared it all. Um, the district thing. Old wise. Yes. For the district, what I really love and, and the way that Stephanie always says it is that our school board treats you like professionals and makes sure that you have the time needed to develop yourselves and to work together. So that's the biggest thing for me, especially coming off our PD days last week, how valuable those were to first meet together as a district and have teams meet. Four years ago when we started doing that, at least when I came into the elementary mind of doing it, it was really scary for my teachers to do that. They felt too vulnerable and felt looked down upon. And now they come and they've got relationships built and they feel like they have something positive to share. So that's huge and that has had, we've had to build that over the last couple of years. And then as on a school level, it's similar to what Jim said, that it's not just a teacher team that changes a kid's life. It's the team with all of the supports that we put in place to help them. So at Heber Valley, I'm really proud of what we've done to look at what a kid needs and make sure that they get help in all of those areas, not just one. And making sure that it's not, you know, you can have this or this, but we're going to make sure you get all of it. And you know, that wouldn't happen if we didn't have such a strong team that knows that it's not just the grade level, but it's all the other people that play into that interventionist, special education, coaches and all of those people. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you.
I, I think the thing that blows my mind when I think about this is the amount of time this has taken. You know, what'd you say, two thousand and seven, Jim? You know, two thousand and seven to come down and talk about an early out so that we can work together. And then I, I, the, the patience, like, you know, to have a superintendent that knows, we're not, we can't, we can't do this by fiat. I can't just demand everybody do something. But he's led by example to help us get where we need to be. Like one of the things I'm most proud of at Daniel's Canyon that I'd want people to see is, is really the history of our growth over the last four years. And even talking about the, the master schedule that Laney talks about, Stephanie shared that with me four years ago, but it took us four years to have all the teachers buy into it. And now they're looking at this saying, this is a fantastic schedule and it's making a difference in what we're doing. And yet if I had just walked in and said, hey, here's Old Mill's schedule, this is what we have to do, that's not a PLC. That's not, and that's not what our school needed. We needed time to figure out why that was going to work. And that's the beauty of, of what the PLC work lets us do and the patience to get there, to let us figure these things out because it is about building our capacity. You know, Old Mill was ahead of us, they still are, but there's something that we've got to change as we go. So that's something I would share within Daniel's Canyon. And as a district, I think the thing I shared this morning, the thing that's changed me as an administrator, and I think Justin and I started at the same time, so it is, I think it's nineteen years, is I can't believe how much more I know now than I did. And it's because I had Jim Judd coming and meeting with me every week to talk about what we were doing. And then I had Garrick and then I have Stephanie and they don't come in and tell us what to do. They help us get better because they come in and say, how do I help? And then we lay out, here's what we're working on and they help us get there. But again, it's through that PLC process and then we're able to come back as a whole district. So this, I think there are so many schools in the state that say they're PLCs and they're really what I think Rick DeFor would call PLC light. It's nice. They've got this little time set apart, but this district has become a PLC machine. And I think that through the leadership we've had, it's guided us there because you cannot force this. And this is what's beautiful about everything we've done. So thank you.
One of the unique things about the Wasatch Learning Academy is that we're a group of singleton teachers. We have one preschool teacher, one kindergarten, all the way up that way. And so these days that have been talked about at the end of each quarter, when my fifth grade teacher can meet with and learn from and share her learning with the other fifth grade teachers across the district, that's really powerful and that just works vertically through the whole school. So that would be something that I would hope visitors to our district would be able to see and learn about how as a district and with the support of a board like each of you are part of, of our school board, that's helped the students learn at higher levels at the Wasatch Learning Academy. Within that, one of the strengths of our Wasatch Learning Academy that the teachers engage in is vertical sharing of ideas and vertical collaboration. But then to pair that with the horizontal of their similar teachers makes a powerful experience for our students. And so we're grateful for what this board has done to support learning at the Wasatch Learning Academy.
I think for me, I am so grateful for the relationships across the district. When I came in as an elementary principal, I think we started really collaborating, building those relationships and becoming vulnerable with each other. And now it has developed into a collaboration across the elementary schools where my faculty has recognized that we need to start doing student-led conferences because we know that Hattie's Because we know that Hattie's research shows that, um, self-reported grades have a high, um, effect size. Uh, for student success and something that being new, that's something that my faculty hasn't done. And so they've been a little cautious of how do we get into it? And all it takes is a phone call, uh, to Laney King or to any other school in the district that is doing that and saying, hey, could we come over and learn from you? And we're striving to get better, not because it's a competition between schools, but because it's a collaboration and we're in it together. Um, I think a lot of the other principals have said very similar things to what they would show. But I think one of the things that I would tell people is that being a model PLC is not a destination. Um, if that were the case, my job would be pretty easy because, uh, Midway Elementary became a model PLC school. Um, the spring before I came in as principal. Um, and I will tell you, even though we are a model PLC school, we are still doing the productive struggle. The teachers are still working and collaborating. I think I've seen more productive struggles this year than I did in the past, uh, three years that I've been there. It's not a destination, it's a journey that never ends and the work continues. Because we realize until we have a hundred percent of our kids at, um, high levels of learning, we still have more work to do. And I'm just appreciative of, um, the PLC across the district, um, from top to bottom and, and the support. And the help that that gives to me as a leader, but, um, to every single student in reaching their achievement.
Okay, so it's exciting because now we have a lot to share. And we're gonna open up and we're gonna share and we're excited for the opportunity to do that because I think that's kind of a next step in for us getting better. Uh, as we share, we'll get better. Um, as we continue to work and grow, like Jenny just said, this was, this was a goal. Um, but you have to reapply all the time. This isn't a permanent thing once you reach it, if you want this designation, so we're just gonna keep working, trying to become better. We appreciate your support so much. None of this happens without you making some of the courageous decisions that you do. And so thank you for all you do and go Wasatch.
Comments?
Wow.
I know.
I mean, we knew it was on the agenda, but, you know, in board docs, it's one slide. This is a lot of hard work. I mean, like you guys were pointing out, it's seventeen years in the making. The blood, sweat, tears, time away from your family. There's a lot of people behind that, a lot of people, so personally. And as a school board member and parent. Thank you.
It's amazing to see from our standpoint and, you know, we're, me, Mary Ann, but most of us not educators to see. Behind the veil with all of you and, and what's so amazing is to sense your excitement. Ab- about this process as administrators because it, you know, it, it could be kind of monotonous and, and amazing how. The buy-in is just palpable, palpable. We, we can sense it, feel it. And, uh, thank, thank you so much for educating all of us. Same.
Paul, how long ago were you up in the third floor office?
Well, that would have been, uh, that, this is my ninth year as, as superintendent, so it would have been. It would have been nine and a half years ago and I, I spent about five years up there after I came over from Wasatch High.
Okay, the very first time I learned about PLCs was, uh, up in Paul's office up there. So that was a long time ago. I don't know if you remember that, but.
Kinda do.
He, on the whiteboard, explained the whole thing. I was sitting there, learning about PLCs and. At the time I was just, you know, what, PTA volunteered at Old Mill Elementary. I don't even know why I was there, but. I was like, okay, you know, didn't, that's cool, didn't really understand, but. Just like how you say that it's years in the making, it takes years to understand and, um. Witness and be involved. I think I came, was it Steph? Um, to an Old Mill, what, Monday PLC morning? And that was probably when I was really first immersed in it and really started to understand what it was about. And, um, I just really, really appreciate the program because it includes, it focuses on every student. And this is what I try to explain out in the community is, is our district does their best. To make every learning for each child individual. And, and I love superintendent's analogy of, uh, teachers being given the tool belt. And you get to pick and choose from your tool belt and, and teach that one child how, how they need to learn. So, it's been really, really cool to watch this grow. And, and it's been really neat for me to learn along the way and see what it's really about. And for this to come to fruition, so thank you.
I, I would just maybe add, uh, Jim, uh, Mr. Judd alluded to this, but. In, in the fall of, the summer kind of two thousand six. Um, I joined a new a- administrative team. Um, a new principal named, uh, Paul Sweat had two new assistants. And as we started planning for the year, the, the first thing that, um. Then new principal Sweat said is, there's some really exciting research around, um. Something that's called, uh, professional learning communities as a way to improve and that's what this school's gonna do. And he has been leading that effort in this district ever since. And he'll be the first to recognize the role that many people have played. Including all those you've seen out here, including Dr. Peterson and a lot of other ones. But the person who has been driving this, almost single-handedly at first, a year later, all the principals came in like Jim said. And asked the board for, um, for this, this collaborative time. But Superintendent Sweat's been leading this effort for, since two thousand and six. And this is an awesome culmination of, of a real vision that, that Superintendent Sweat brought as a principal. And has carried on, on the third floor and from the superintendent's office.
Thank you. Well, thank you and I, I appreciate the kind words. I also appreciate. Um, listening to our, our principals and we have some, we have some awesome assistant principals and. And other district leaders in the crowd today as well and. Um, I don't know how anybody, I, I, it was just a little bit of a flavor, but you can, you can hear. The passion for excellence, the passion for student achievement. And I hope, I hope that, uh, it shines through for all of us like it does for me. The, the keen intellect, the educational, um, proficiency that all of these leaders have. They're the best of the best. It's a, it's a great team and I would stack them up against, against any other administrative team anywhere. Um, some of the big districts, as, as superintendents get to know our principals a little bit. And some of the collaboration we do within the public school partnership and other areas, they. They asked me, how in the world did you get so many just outstanding principals in one little small district up in the, up in the mountains? And, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know the answer to that especially, other than, um, we're all here, um, we're all working together. And, uh, it's been a, it's been a, a wonderful journey to, to get to where we're at today. I, I'd love to hear Mrs. Meacham's comment as we haven't arrived anywhere. We've just, we've just kind of hit a milestone along the way. And I love the fact that Wasatch County School District, if you enroll your students in Wasatch County School District. You've got as good or a better chance as any district in the state of Utah. And, and most districts around the country for student success. We're not done yet. We know that we still have a long ways to go. Um, but this is, this is all based on percentages of students. That are on grade level, above the bar and moving forward. And it's as good as it gets and our plan is to go in one direction and that's straight up. I think we're just getting started. So, great things, um, to come here in Wasatch County School District. And it could not have happened without, um, a school board that was working shoulder to shoulder with us. Not only in board meetings, but, um, attending hundreds of activities out in the schools and offering support. And when a board member can walk in and, and, and just be part of the furniture at one of our schools and, and have a conversation with. With teachers and aides and lunch ladies and, and give support and give encouragement. It's, it's been a, it's, it's been a, a wonderful thing to have the board so involved. Um, and so helpful and so supportive of, of, uh. What the things that have led, the activities that have led to us being designated as. Uh, a PLC model school district. So, what a great accomplishment. Congratulations to all of you, to our board, everybody involved. This means only, only good and, and great and better things for our students moving forward. Thank you.
Real quick, cause I don't wanna leave anybody out. I didn't give Alex from JR Smith a chance to come up, so I'm gonna make him come up now. He thought he was getting out of it, but he's coming up.
Well, I'm excited to be here and it's really kind of cool to be able to, uh, go back to how did Paul Sweat do this? He's a leader and he's been able to kind of bring people together. There's a reason why I'm here in Wasatch County School District and I drive from Springville every day. Because I get giddy and excited to be here, to do the work that I'm passionate about. So, from my perspective, watching the district, there's clear alignment from the top all the way down. With the intent to build capacity in the people that are doing the work. Set around students driven by goals that allow us to be able to accomplish who and what we wanna be able to be. And, uh, I know that that's a culture within this district that is unique. Um, being able to be outside of the district and then come and watch it and to be a part of it. Just gets me so happy and excited to be able to come every day. What I would love for people to come and see what happens within my building is the work that my teachers are engaged in. From my leadership team to their passion and excitement to talk about how are they meeting the needs of kids? To building and adjusting this, the school culture on a regular basis. On how they're tweaking and adjusting what needs to be done to be able to meet the needs of kids as kids change. We've got a high influx of students moving into our school right now. Um, and our teachers are in, are committed and excited. About how they're trying to adjust the schedule, the master schedules they talked about, to be able to meet the needs of kids. To interventions to, for us, learning from other schools, uh, Katie came up earlier and Mrs. Cummings talked about. Um, some of the great things they're doing. We've stolen an idea from them to do onboarding with some of our kids. That are coming straight from other countries and those kids are finding success and happy to be in a system that's meeting their needs. So, there's so many things that we could show them and wanna show them. Um, my deep gratitude and thank you for letting us be able to do work that we're passionate about. Knowing that we're supported by a school board that's got a, a vision for where it can be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I really do wish our whole community was here to hear this tonight. Because this is amazing to hear from each one of you and, and, uh, so, so valuable. Anything else? I would like to move into, uh, public comment. Uh, we have about twenty minutes dedicated for that. If there is someone who would like to come, take the microphone. You have the, the time.
My name's Briann Diedrickson. I am in Mary Ann Allen's district. And I would definitely like to comment on the presentation that was just given. I was hired as an, uh, English ten teacher in Wasatch in two thousand seven. And I had just graduated from Utah State University. And fresh out of college, fresh out of all the research, I hadn't heard of PLCs. And I got hired by Wasatch High School and my first year teaching, I got sent to a conference. Where I was educated on the professional learning communities. And I was so grateful to come back and have that support of the professional learning community to help students as a first year teacher. Fast forward six years when I was at assistant principal at the intermediate school. And I got to take teachers to that PLC conference and see them buy into the idea. So I would just like to thank the board for, uh, funding that professional development and giving the time. I've been out of the schools ten years now, home with four kids and my kids are in the schools. And it matters to me to know that their needs are being met and to see them achieve at high levels. And I am so grateful as a parent to know that, uh, there are faces to that data because I've been part of that process. And that my kids are getting what they need individually as are all kids. So I would thank the board and I would thank the superintendent for that vision. Thank you.
Um, Drew Campswafford in Mary Ann's district as well. Um, I wanted to stand up in front of you guys today, um, because I have been like frustrated with some things. I'm sure as all, all of us are feeling, um, just some tension, but I, or just some tension around, um, just the climate of things. Um, and as I'm preparing to go to Washington DC with my, um, student government students next week. A common theme I've had in my head is how do I teach these kids to have civil discourse? In a moment when emotions are gonna be super, super high, right? Cause we're gonna be in Washington DC on election night and I'm helping them process all of these things that. I as an adult with like a fully developed brain, I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to process, right? And as I've been thinking this, I'm thinking, okay, right now, I kind of go back to my foundation and just things that help me. Reground myself and in my desk, um, as a teacher, I have a box, I guess. That is every single thank you card I've ever been given, um, which includes any like thank you email. Like I have one from, um, board member Dickerson from all those years ago when I had our son. And on those really, really hard times or in those really hard moments, I just pull that box out and I will just pull a random card. Um, and it just helps me reground and just remember why I'm a teacher and why I spend all of my days. Um, within contract time and outside of contract time taking care of others' kids. Um, and it really helps me and so what I'm hoping right now, and I'm way better writer than I am an orator. But I'm hoping to kind of give you like a little card to put into your mental box, um, just as a thank you for, um. Your really hard days because I know that that's what you've been facing, um, throughout your tenure as board members and as, um. A board committee. Um, thank you for, as a parent, supporting me so that that way, after I get home from taking care of other kids. I have the time and the means to take care of my own kids. Because you've prioritized my salary, you've prioritized my needs so that I can take care of other people's kids during the day and do my best ability. But then I can press pause and take care of my own kids. But then also I know that as my kids are going through the school system, um, as I have one at Daniel's Canyon. That they are getting the best things that they, that he needs, um, even on, on an IEP, I have no worries at all about him and his future. Because of the support that you guys are giving to teachers and also to parents. So thank you very much. Um, again, I just really wanna say thank you for all that you do for me as an individual. Um, as a community member, as a parent, as a teacher, just thank you.
Can I comment to that? Thank you. So, so Drew came in earlier during before study session and brought in all of the student, student government kids with. You wanna read?
Quenches.
Quench it cuts.
Yeah.
With notes.
With notes and, um, my husband and I often talk about different leadership roles in the community. That truly are thankless. But being a school board member is not a thankless job. People will say, oh, it's so thankless, but it really isn't because it's, it's moments like that when those kids walked in. I, I lost it. I mean, it's been a week, right? So it was mo- it's moments like that and it's moments like this when it becomes rewarding. It's moments like, you know, something simple as helping with the theater, uh, production yesterday. You know, it's just little moments like that, that, that helped me, like you said, become grounded. Um, back to my purpose and my why and this is my why. And so it really, it's, it's not a thankless job. I love it. This is my why and thank you for. Just the support that the board gets, so.
Um, Dave McNauton, I'm also in Mary Ann's district, but, uh, I didn't know we were doing it that way. Congratulations. I, I, uh, I, I, as a citizen, I've lived here over thirty years and, um. You know, I, I was a poli sci major. I've run for office before myself and, um. I just wanna thank you, win, lose or draw, actually I don't, I guess there's no draws in this next week, but, um. Thank you for your service because you have done the courageous things no matter what it took and, um. And um what you do affects my life as a citizen with kids in this building. I mean, I've got, had five go through this school district. And so, again, win, lose, thank you for the service you've, you've done and the courage you've had to, to do the things that sometimes make it thankless. So, thank you so much.
Thanks, Dave.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Whitney North and I'm in Tyler's district. Um, I am also a teacher at Wasatch High School and I just wanna talk to you about my concerns about the district calendar. I, all of my classes are, they are elective classes although I teach business offers professional and financial literacy, which are both graduation requirements. So, even though they're elective, a couple of them also are graduation requirements as well as concurrent enrollment classes. And my concern is that the fall semester is so much shorter than the spring semester. Even the proposed calendars, there's still a large discrepancy in the length of those. Um, I believe all the proposed ones are eighteen days shorter. And when you put that into the black gold calendar, that's nine additional classes in the spring. So, that is a lot. But then when you also look at the black gold calendar, that that ends up being about four weeks of instruction. So, my kids in the spring are getting almost an additional month of instruction than the kids in the fall. And that's not fair too. The kids in the fall to the teachers preparing the curriculum. Um, I really love teaching. I love my classes and it makes me feel bad when in the fall I have to kind of teach the bare minimums to make it through um just in the shortened time we have. So, thank you. Please consider doing something to even those semesters out.
Ma'am?
I have a, or wait, I have a question. What would your suggestion be to that calendar then?
Um, first, I think fall break should shorten. Um, and I'm not gonna lie, I really love the long fall break. But I don't think it's what's best for students getting that much shorter um time in the fall, in the fall semester. I think some of our professional development days could move to the spring. Maybe not put two of them back to back in the fall. Um, I don't know. Maybe something to look at. I know that um other concurrent enrollment teachers that I teach with in Alpine, Nebo and Provo districts. So, I looked at theirs because those are the teachers that I collaborate with. That they, their semesters are a lot more even. And so, I looked at their calendars and they've been able to have similar professional development days, but their semesters are a lot more even because of how they've spaced those days out and moved them around.
I have a quick question to that then. So, do they have a much shorter fall break? Like is it a full week or is it smaller than a week? Like is it three days?
I believe all three of those districts have Thursday, Friday and Monday off.
And I, I don't know if you were here for a study session, but I do wanna say thank you because you did email us as well. And we actually spoke to your email.
I'm sorry that I'm saying it again.
No, I appreciate you coming. We appreciate you being here and I just wanted you to know that in study session, we actually referenced your email because it's valuable to hear from our teachers. So, thank you for taking the time.
Thanks. And I feel like that is a concern among probably all teachers that teach semester classes. Um, though when I've talked to them, that it's a common concern among them.
Thank you.
I'm Ryan Bishop and I'm not gonna tip my pitch of what district I'm in. No, I'm just kidding. I'm, I'm, I'm in Kim's. Or who's my school board member? So, um I, I am very appreciative. Uh, Mr. McNauton said something that kinda resonated with me today and it was, it was brought up in some meetings that we had um as administrators. And that's courage and it takes courage to run for school board. It takes courage to um come back and, and pass uh or uh come to work on a bond that wasn't passed in twenty nineteen. It takes courage to um continue to, to make sure that our teachers are supported as Ms. Campswafford mentioned. And uh I, I think it's all, I'm also feeling that a little bit of heaviness around this election and, and some things that's been referenced a couple of times tonight. And from, you know, not speaking for Justin or the rest of our administrative team that's here tonight, but I also safely can say that we um appreciate that courage that you guys have shown uh time and time again. And, and, and again, as was mentioned, regardless of what happens, um you have set educators up in this valley for a long, long time for continued success with the building that's going in across the valley and uh with, with the salaries to create hiring pools and such so that we can continue to chase these goals and uh student achievement. So, I appreciate the comments that were made and, and I appreciate that I can process for a minute and stand up and, and thank you tonight. We, we greatly uh appreciate it. I happened to be over at the soccer banquet before I came over here tonight and uh I do not want this to come across condescending, but don't listen to the vocal minority because the silent majority is out there supporting you. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you so much. That was so edifying. Appreciate every one of you for that. That, that means a lot to us. It really, really does. Thank you so much. If not, well, anything else to move on to? Okay. If not, move into some uh consent items. Oh yeah, okay. Sorry, yes. Zach, you're not getting off the hook. Okay. We have a presentation from Zach. Zach, go ahead and give us an introduction as to what you'll be sharing with us tonight and as it relates to.
So, I'm gonna be talking to you about Utah legislative, or Utah House Bill eighty-four, the requirements for school safety and security. I gave each of you a playbook that's been put out by the School Safety Center. This is kind of our miniature bible for now on this topic, so. I don't know if you want me to keep going right now or wait until everybody pretending it comes back? All right, okay. Um, so House Bill eighty-four. Let's see, sorry, I gotta figure out how to run a Mac. No, I'm good. I got it, it's all right. So, the School Safety Center first. Um, it was formed in twenty nineteen by the Utah State Legislature. Um, consists of school board, Utah State School Board members, Department of Public Safety members, um Office of Substance and Mental Health members and Safe Utah. Um, their mission is to work with LEAs, which is us, to ensure school safety and improve the climate of school communities. I am just kind of going through this playbook if you guys wanna follow along with it, but I feel like you have to, so. Um, their vision is to ensure each student learns in a safe and healthy environment. Okay, so statutory requirements based on this legislation. Um, before I get into them, I'll just say thanks again to you as a board. You've made this job easy. Um, a lot of these requirements, the requirements that most districts are struggling with, you've already taken care of. Um, this very first one, armed and trained school personnel, which is either a school resource officer, a school guardian or an armed school security officer we've had in place for five or six years now. So, districts are, are freaking out. Not, I mean, they, they don't know what to do about this, honestly. It's, it's a huge deal for most districts. We're taking care of, so it's, this is one thing I don't even have to deal with, which is great. So, it was new in this legislation. Um, let's kinda go through this. Behavioral threat assessments. It was last year, House Bill sixty-one required these. We did, we did behavioral threat assessments um with the school safety specialists in each building. We submitted those in order to get grants. We're, we've done some upgrades, intercom upgrades, secure entry upgrades, a few things based on that. Building and safety standards, which we'll talk about in a minute, they're new for this, this session. County Security Chief is a new position. Emergency response plans were already in place, but they will be ongoing. Emergency evacuation drills were in place. The LEA, School Safety and Security Director is a new position. School multidisciplinary teams, which we already have in place, but we're gonna be emphasizing those a lot more. School Safety and Security Specialists, which was created last year. So, we have most of those in place already. School Safety Needs Assessment, so this is a new assessment this year. Um, I'll talk about it a little bit more in a minute. Standard Response Protocol, which we already have in place. We use like the I love you guys. Um, we have our duress app that we use for part of that, so we're already taking care of there. And then a wearable panic button. We're still working on details on that one from, from the state, but for now, we're counting our, our duress app as every teacher has a cellphone. They can use it to instantly notify law, law enforcement or the main office or whoever they need to, so. Um, so to quickly go over the personnel involved in this. State Security Chief, um I'll go a little faster. Matt Pennington, he's, he was named, he's kind of, he's right up there with like the state fire marshal. Some of, you know, he's right, he's at the head of the Department of Public Safety over this division, so. Um, his duties are just, you know, to ensure everything's being done as according to the law and to help come up with the rules. That's what we're waiting for mostly is rules right now on what's involved here. Um, our County Security Chief is Sergeant Ray Beza. Um, he's been one of our SROs for several years at several different schools. Um, he's now no longer an actual SRO, but he does take the place of any of the SROs that need to be gone for whatever reason, so. That is a position created by, by law. So, the school district requirements, so your requirements are to designate a School Safety and Security Director that acts as the point of contact for the, the County Security Chief and the state, which I've been told is me, so I'm doing it. Add on the shoulder, right? So, um, I'm not gonna go into detail into all the requirements, the, the things I have to do. Um, you guys are welcome to read through there. I do have to have a concealed carry permit, a few different things that are required. All stuff I'm happy to do. Um, I am using this presentation for other things as well, so it's kinda long, but. Um, our s- School Safety and Security Specialists, so these, these are the people that are actually doing the job. Duke was here. Cause Duke's one of our School Safety Specialists for Rocky Mountain. Um, Jenny was one and Dave was one, but the, the law changed this year that the principal couldn't be the School Safety Specialist anymore. So, they had to name new people. Um, they were two of my best. I miss having them, but. Um, the School Safety Specialists, for the most part, are an assistant principal or what do we call them at elementary schools? The teachers on special assignments? Is that what you call them there? Vice principals? Um, they're amazing people so far. I've, I've been really impressed. I didn't think, it, it's bad of me, but I didn't think a lot of them were that involved in it until we started to communicate about different things this year and all of a sudden they're like, oh yes, I've already done all this. I've already taken care of all this. I know about all this and it's just, it's impressive to me how much they care even though they didn't have somebody there holding their hand, telling them to go through all this stuff, telling them to look at their, you know, their response, their active response, their active threat assessments. They're, they just, they just do it. They're just excited to be doing the job. And they've all got great administrators helping them out, so. Sorry, let me scroll down here. So, the, the school specialists, they are gonna be required to be C-stag trained. Um, I'm working with Dr. Campbell, Dr. Campbell on this. We're gonna get everybody C-stag trained. Um, as well as their, their whole multidisciplinary team in each school. So, the law refers to them as a threat assessment team. Um, don't think of a threat as just an, an active shooter. It's a, any type of threat, you know, a violent student that may be coming back to school. This team gets together, decides what needs to be done to accommodate that student. So, this is a lot more than just, just security that i- in the typical way we think of it, so. Um, we will get all of them C-stag trained, which is required. Um, there is a stipend for each of these specialists of three thousand dollars a year. We then take their, their benefits and that out of it as well. That's funded by the state. Um, we just submitted for that. We should be reimbursed in January for it, so. Um, I, I think they would probably all be happy to do it without the money. They're just that quality of people that we've got there. Um, the School Safety Needs Assessment, so this is conducted. This year, we had a whole team of people doing it. Um, myself, administrator, Sergeant Beza, the School Safety Specialist. We had our representative from the state. Um, the SRO at each building. In the future, it's only required for, for Sergeant Beza and the School Safety Specialist to do these. Um, they just, they're just gonna go and look at the building every year, see what things are lacking, what things are doing good in, make recommendations to me on what they think needs to be fixed and then we'll submit for funding on those, so. Something that, that my, my contact at the state has asked me to make sure everybody's aware of is the results of these assessments are protected information. We don't share the weaknesses of our schools, right, with anybody. So, our, our little team are the only ones that know what we talk about in there. Nope, it's not. It is protected information, so. The, the code has it called out right there as a class B misdemeanor for anyone that talks about it. That's the same thing with the, the armed guard or the guardian, if we have a guardian, which we won't, but it's the same thing. People aren't allowed to know who the guardian is, but we don't have to worry about that, so. Um, okay, so building and safety standards, this is where, probably where the school board gets involved more than anything because this is where the money's gonna come in. It's gonna require state buildings and schools to have emergency external communications, communication systems such as repeaters for first responder radios to ensure signal strength within each school. Um, provide the lead teacher in each classroom with a wearable panic alert device. Um, ensure before the school year begins that all building personnel receive training on these devices and then assure cameras are in working funk, working order where we need them in each building. And they have some minimum requirements that we're required to meet. Um, I do wanna add right here that, just like I said earlier, most of this is still waiting on the rules, okay? There's a lot of, we have to do this, but they don't tell us how we're supposed to do some of this stuff yet. So, once we get those rules, we'll start working on the details, but. Um, some of the lim, minimum requirements are limited entry points, um internal video surveillance of entries, ground level window protection by security film. That's gonna be the big, the big cost involved. Um, hopefully the state funds it, but we don't know yet, so. They're gonna acquire all first floor windows on every school building to have a security film on them up to six feet, so. That's, that's, it's a lot. Um, internal classroom door locks, we have those, most of our buildings, we have a couple we need to, to upgrade still. Bleed kits and first aid kits. Uh, we have the bleed kits. We got funding for those last year. Um, we haven't distributed them to the schools. We just got them a couple of weeks ago, actually. Um, exterior cameras on entrances, parking areas and campus grounds and fencing around playgrounds. For the most part, other than the, the ground level window protection and on the film, we're, we're pretty covered on all this stuff, so. But that's a huge one. I mean, I don't even wanna guess what the cost's gonna be in that one just for our district, let alone statewide, so. Once I know more on that one, I'm sure you'll be seeing me again up here, so. Um, any questions so far before I keep going?
I have a bunch of questions, but keep going.
All right, okay. I'll get to the end. Um, so that was kind of the end of the secure, building, actual physical security, safety part of it. The rest of this, um, I, I won't even claim to be any type of an expert at this. Has to do more with bullying, um, but it is still a part of this job. So, I'm gonna be involved in these teams that are handling this stuff. Um, so the school district, we need to update our policy language outlining certain incidents with students. Um, I referenced that code there. We need to develop our, these, you know, bullying, bullying policies. Anything we do with disciplinary type policies, uh, we need to develop them with input from students, parents, teachers. Uh, we need to develop them with input from students, parents, teachers, administrators, staff, and our local law enforcement agencies. Um, I know we have people already that are working on this kind of stuff. We have school psychologists. Um, but now we are required by law to have this stuff updated and ready to go, so. Um, provide protection to a student regardless of a student's legal status. Um, here's some of the, the things needing to be included in this policy. Um, I'll let you guys read through them in your books if you want, like I, like I say, I don't claim to be an expert here, so. I hope to be in the future, but. Um, we need to have grievance policies, we need to have communicate, we have all that, yeah. Communication process, you know, to send these things out to students, to send them out to teachers to get their feedback. Um, this bottom one's one they've brought up, a requirement for a signed statement annually indicating that the individual signing the statement has received the governing board's policy from each of them. So this, employees, students, and parents. I'm not quite sure how we're gonna handle that one, but. And then training and edu- education and prevention. So we must designate at least one individual at the district for bullying incident response who provides training to our employees. I assume this will be like a psychologist. Dr. Campbell, perfect. Um, oversees the implemation, implementation of these plans. Um, you guys can read all that. I'm not gonna go through all the rest of it. Yeah, so that's the end of my presentation. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have about myself, about the School Safety Specialists, whatever, whatever questions you have.
So the timing of this is really good. I, we've actually been getting, like, we received an email or two, and I know I've had some phone calls, and I even received a message today, just kind of, where does, um, assessing safety for crosswalks? Yeah, where does that fall?
So crosswalks are a city, a city thing. We, Sean and I have met with, uh, the city engineer about these. If we have concerns, we can take them to the city and then they have to do traffic studies and student counts and they have their whole process to decide if a crosswalk is allowed, I guess is the right way to put it.
So one thing that we do is we have safe walking routes. So all the principals develop a safe walking route that's approved and sent to the state. Through that safe walking route, we identify crossings. And the city works with us and says, okay, we have a big number of students crossing here, this is where we're gonna place the crossing guard. They do not have the resources to put a crossing guard on every intersection, so they come up with the high traffic areas and that changes. We changed a couple of them this year where there used to be a lot of students going across the road, now it's shifted to another intersection, so they've moved people. But the city is responsible for crossing of their streets, so they have their own guards, the lights, all that is city sponsored. We work with them and we help them and we dictate kind of where we need it through the safe school walking route that the community council is in charge of for each school.
And they have several requirements, you know, whether it's a crosswalk with flashing lights, a crosswalk that's a school zone, a crosswalk that requires a, a crossing guard, and those are all, you know, they're out of our hands, basically.
Same with the county.
There were some concerns that were brought up just in general about school lighting. Where does that fall under?
Um, so I mean, that's something that would be part of our, our threat, our needs assessment as we do them. I did have a couple that were listed on my list this year, is, you know, we need more lighting in this area. Um, if it's something specific, I would say just, just, just let me know about it and we, we can deal with it from a maintenance side.
Fix the lights in the baseball room, I really appreciate it.
Took, took a couple, took a couple years, but we got it done.
And the only other question I have is, um, are we using that app? Are we using that app still?
The dress app, yes.
We got trained on it again last month. It's a great tool and resource that fits all the requirements of the bill. It's, law enforcement has it, dispatch has it, anytime an alert goes out, dispatch automatically gets it and all law enforcement have the alert. So it covers everything. It's a good, good system. We're ahead on that as well.
We hope it stays that way once the rules come out. I, I expect it will, but we don't know for sure.
Thanks, Zach. Appreciate it.
Okay, we can move on to consent items.
Motion to approve consent items.
Okay, few action items we have, not many, um, but let's, uh, I guess Zach, bring you right back. I tried to do that quickly, I couldn't pull it off, Zach.
It's alright, I had to go get my paper. Alright, so I have for you tonight, um, a bid for, Steph will be happy to see this, she pushed for years for this. Um, this is for some port in place rubber surfacing for the playground at Old Mill Elementary. Um, our playground there is currently ADA compliant with the, the wood chips that we use. But just because it's compliant doesn't mean it's necessarily adequate for the students in wheelchairs, so. Um, we're, we're gonna have pour in place, you know, a nice area that they can wheel around to get to the, the unloading spots to get to some of the, uh, they have like a tic tac toe board under there they play with and a few different things, so. Um, this will allow them to easily wheel right up to them. I think they have five students in wheelchairs there this year, so. Um, I have two bids for this, one from Big T Recreation and one from Park and Play Structures. I do want to point out my quote from Big T Recreation was originally thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. Eleven thousand of that was site prep and installate, or just site prep. Um, but thanks to you guys and allowing me to buy the proper equipment, we can do that site prep ourselves with our Mini X that we bought last year, so that'll save us eleven thousand dollars on this project, so. Um, it's my recommendation that the board approve playground surfacing for Old Mill Elementary from Park and Play Structures, um, for twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars.
He's so moved.
It'll probably be late spring. We might even wait till school's out. It's too cold to do it this year now, but if I get the price locked in, then they'll, they'll stay within a percent or two of it come next spring, so.
A plan is to do one elementary school per year. You might get that question. As this goes in, other schools are gonna want it. Our plan is to do one a year. Daniels Canyon would be our next one.
I don't know, they're both fighting over it.
Prioritize that based on the number of students in wheelchairs?
Hey, Zach, I wanted to thank you publicly too, that whole corridor where the ball field is, the soccer, you really cleaned it up. It was looking a little peaky there for a while, but appreciate all your efforts. It's, uh, standing tall, looking a lot better. Appreciate it.
So who won that question?
Thanks, Zach.
Thanks, Zach.
Okay, this next item, we're going to actually table. Uh, this is the discussion we had earlier on the calendar. Um, with, with Steph Dishart, we're, uh, actually going to put a few more proposals out, a few more calendars that we will, uh, give feedback from, from Miss, Miss North, uh, today. Appreciate it so much, but there are, this, this is under review and then we are planning on, on putting forth, uh, a few more calendars and, and we'll come back to this decision next, next month uh, on this item, so, uh, thank, thank you very much. Uh, I make a motion to table this. Uh, lastly, Dr. Eric Campbell.
Great, thank you for the opportunity to present to the board this proposal. Um, MGT was previously known as Davis Demographics. This, um, this proposal is to help us start to look at the boundaries um, for the, our high school split to, we're excited about this process to provide more opportunities for our kids, really enjoyed that that presentation during our study session on that. So excited that we're moving forward with this part. As you know, that there's a lot that goes into, um, dividing boundaries, there's a lot of um, data and a lot of work behind the scenes that we need to do to present to the community, 'cause it is something that brings up a lot of emotion, um, as we've done this process in the past. Um, we are grateful for the help that we would have from MGT to do this. Um, this would be uh, outside of the contract that they already have with us, the work that they would do with us, uh, behind the scenes, creating opportunities for us to do different scenarios and proposals to give us a, a dashboard to be able to do those and make some changes as we work with them. And then also then to, uh, provide us the information we need to be able to present different opp- opportunities or or proposals to our community. So with that, the proposal for them with the extra work for the boundary planning would be thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. So our recommendation is that this would be, um, approved so we can move forward with them.
So moved.
A favor.
Aye.
Aye, discussion.
I, I'm voting for it, obviously, like, as hard as this is gonna be on our community, I'm, I'm willing to put some money behind doing it right.
This is good money spent, I think it really is. It's gonna help.
And it's gonna help, 'cause no matter what, it's, it's hard, no matter what. So, any help?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Very much.
Okay, uh, board report. Any, anything out of the state, Mary Ann, any, uh?
Intermeetings are continuing. I should've said this earlier, Zach, so I'll say it now. As he talks about funding and rules associated with HB eighty-four, um, there's a lot going on. I know people think the budget gets decided during the session, but a lot of it is really decided in the interim leading up to the session and by dis- by December, quite honestly. Um, so as they're making these rules, and I can reach out and definitely put in my two cents especially, I know other districts are as well. Um, and again, it goes to work of previous boards. Our reputation precedes us. And we are in a much better spot than a lot of districts. And so hopefully the impact and the cost won't be felt as hard in Wasatch, um, but yeah, there's a lot in, in terms going on, a lot of meetings with legislators right now. Just setting priorities for the session and which bills are gonna come out, so that's where we are right now. Lot of involvement. Anytime you can, reach out. They will listen. So, that's where we're at on that.
Thank you. Thanks for what you do with that, appreciate it.
Oh, I guess I should report on regional dinner as well for USBA. That was actually really good. We had a good meeting at, uh, New Place. But we had, there was, speaking of PLCs, um, there was a really good discussion on finances and on budgeting and other districts in our region who had had the lovely experience of an OLAG audit and what they've learned from that and what others can learn from that. As we all know, eventually we will have that experience as well, so it was a good meeting. Learned a lot.
How was the food? What's the place called? Yeah, I liked mine.
Yeah, I liked mine. Black Rock, what's it called? Black Rock something.
It was a new place, it was new because we wanted a place that was better for discussion.
Black Rock Resort, the restaurant there, yeah.
I think that's the first time you've missed, so it's okay.
Okay, superintendent. Oh, sorry.
You're good, sorry.
I don't, I don't have anything else at this time.
Well, if you do. Do you wanna go? If you do?
No, I don't.
Okay. I, so I had the privilege of going with, um, the Theater Encore Kids. There were eight girls and four adults, and we went to New York over fall break. And I just wanna say how amazing it is to uh, just be immersed in a group like that and get to know the students and get to know the teacher and teachers, actually in this case, and, um, it's just another way of of learning firsthand how kids interact with each other, how teachers interact with their students, and bonding. You know, we, you, you have a lot of bonding time during the week, and so that was a really neat trip. We saw four plays. They did, the kids, the girls did some workshops and it was really fun and, um, I really got to know Laurie Turnblom really well and I have grown to really love and appreciate her, so it was just, just my experience. I went as a chaperone, as a parent, but it was also kind of cool as a board member to just be immersed in that and just learn firsthand what, what happens in our schools. So, and Phantom of the Opera is awesome, please go see it.
There's one other thing, can I? I know Jimmy Jed has already left, but I want to point this out because I really appreciated him and his team. Um, I actually heard from some colleagues in Wa- in Weaver County, speaking of PLCs, um, who have really tried to find a good program for, um, their students and their families, and so she reached out and said, hey, do you anythi- do you know anything about madres y padres? And I was like, oh, yes. And so I just wanna say thank you also to administrators. I know Jim's not here, but just being willing on a PD day to have seven people from another district, it goes back to what Garrick is saying about mo- being a model PLC district. Being open to make the time to have these people come and sit down and say, okay, how are you doing this? How are you getting this level of involvement? It really means a lot. And no, like, you know, I know they've been recognized in the media, we've been on NPR, we've been on KPCW for that program, but really in the nitty gritty, having that, that meeting will then go, they will go back and apply it in Weaver County, and it's gonna affect twenty-eight thousand kids there. That is how you build on good things, so I just wanna say thank you for that, to Jim, to his team, to Garia, like all of them. It was a good experience. Thanks.
Perfect. Any else, clerk?
No, sir.
Appreciate it. Well, thank you so much. If not, we'll adjourn. We're going to adjourn to a short executive session uh, where we'll discuss personnel and property, so on and so forth, so appreciate everyone and, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.